Thank you all for coming for the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeal for tonight's meeting. It is Wednesday, December 13, 2023. It is 6:30 p.m., and we are in room 320 at the multi-service center, 48 Marion Roadway, HAMAS. I'm gonna call the meeting to order and make a roll call. My far left, Mr. Richard Sample. My far right, Mr. Troy Larson. Mrs. Veronica Dabenees. Our clerk, Mr. Jim Acubachi. Myself, the chairman. Nazir Akalasi also present. Our building commissioner, Mr. Paul Turner. And assistant town planner, Ms. Sonia Raposo. We're gonna start with some quick business to do. It is the meetings for 11-823.
I've reviewed the minutes. With the exception of a couple of typos, which I've hand-corrected in initials, they're fine as presented. I make a motion to approve.
Okay. I have a motion by Jim. Second? I have a second by Rich. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
We do need some minutes attached. The, um, sorry, we need, we need a letter attached to that. There was no discussion on that.
The minutes say that there's a letter attached.
But there was not a letter attached.
That's the letter from, um...
From Conti.
From...
On Crimley Highway. So with that caveat that those get added, aye.
We can do that.
Oh, we continue until next time.
No, no, we can just, she, Sonia says she's gonna...
You can add it. Alright, so Veronica's aye. Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. Five zero zero. We're gonna go to 39-23, Wareham Cranberry LLC. Use variance for 3020 Cranberry Highway.
Request for continue to December 27, 2023.
Okay. This is the second request, right, Counselor?
Yeah, I also extended deadlines.
Which one is 3020? It used to be the church next to Plumus Supply?
Subway. No, the DeAngelo's.
Oh.
Yeah, this is the one that you guys wanted to see, the review of the stacking of the cars and things like that.
Gotcha.
Just a couple more weeks.
We wanted to see what? We want a site...
Wanted to see the stacking of the cars for the drive-through.
I actually wanna see a site review.
A site plan. We said site plan.
Okay.
Not just the car flow. Site, we asked for a site plan.
Yeah, either way, I mean, I'm asking for the continuance, so...
Okay. When do you wanna come back?
The 27th.
Okay. Got a motion on that?
Move to continue till December 27th.
For 39-23, motion to continue by Jim. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. So it's continued. Thank you. 39-23, new public hearing, 47-23 New Singular Wireless Special Permit, 25 Brown Street.
Just the thickness of this file makes me nervous. Are you thorough or wordy? Hang on, I gotta hear it for you, for Troy, for Richard, for Nazir. I guess I should keep one. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on December 13, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 47-23 for a special permit from the requirements of Article 5, Section 540 and Section 543 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to New Singular Wireless PCS, LLC, DBA, AT&amp;T, care of Michael Dolan Esquire of the One Financial Center, Boston, Mass., proposing to extend existing 150-foot communications tower by 10 feet to a new structure height of 160 feet located at 25 Brown Street, Wareham, Mass., which appears on Assessors Map 56-1000A in the MR30 zoning district.
Very well.
Good evening. My name is Michael Dolan. I work at the law firm of Brown Rudnick, and I'm here on behalf of New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, otherwise known as AT&amp;T. My client, as you may well know, has FCC licenses to operate a wireless telecommunications network across the country, including here in the Commonwealth. As part of the continued build-out of its wireless network, AT&amp;T is seeking to install a wireless antenna facility on a proposed 10-foot extension of the existing 150-foot lattice tower located at 25 Brown Street. The facility will help AT&amp;T fill a coverage gap in this area of Wareham. AT&amp;T is proposing to install six panel antennas on the extended tower at a 159-foot antenna centerline height, together with related radios, amplifiers, surge arresters, cables, and fiber. On the ground within the existing fenced equipment compound, AT&amp;T is also proposing to install electronic equipment inside a walk-in cabinet, as well as a diesel emergency generator, all as more particularly shown on the plans submitted with our application. AT&amp;T has already received a building permit for the generator. From a land use planning perspective, AT&amp;T is very pleased to have found this existing tower that can be extended so that we can locate our antennas and fill our coverage gap, rather than have to consider erecting a new tower in the area or some other form of visually obstructive, visually intrusive structure. The existing tower is authorized pursuant to a special permit granted on November 3, 2015. We are applying here tonight for a special permit as an eligible facilities request pursuant to Section 6409A of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012, otherwise known as the Spectrum Act. For the reasons set forth in our application, we respectfully request the issuance of a special permit.
Alright, very well. Do you own map 56-1001A? Is that 1001A? Is that your law?
Uh, the, only the one on which the tower is located.
B.
B?
Correct. We're B, and A is someone else.
Alright. I believe on our bylaws, the height of the tower, if it collapsed, you need that radius. You're gonna, you're gonna, if it collapsed, you're gonna trespass on Brown Street and on 1001A.
Yeah, so two, two things on that. One, our structural engineers have designed our extension in conjunction with the existing design of the tower, such that in the highly unlikely event of a failure, the tower would collapse on itself and only require 2/3 of the distance. I have a letter here from our engineers that I can submit to the board. As, as I think you know from the original approval for this tower, this tower as extended would only use 56% of the capacity of the foundation and 75% of the capacity of the tower itself. It's able to withstand winds of up to 149 miles an hour. Also, you know, the, I just wanna add that the Spectrum Act does preempt local zoning as it relates to that type of restriction. And to the extent that our facility complies with state building codes, which it does and will, a, a approval is warranted.
I have, I'm not on it by the board. I have no doubts that it's engineered well and everything, but the application, I believe, is defective. Defective, it should be a variance. And based on your explanation with your engineer, a relief could be granted because we will be violating our bylaws. And I, like I said, you do have a strong hardship, but the application should have been a variance, not a special permit.
Yeah, so perhaps we could continue the application so I can speak with town council, if that would help about the fact that there's a federal preemption right here?
Our town council?
Yes.
We, we make the decisions, not him.
Okay, I just thought he...
I mean, I'll pass it by the board. We'll see, maybe you get four out of five, then you're good.
No, 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 I, I...
Okay? He doesn't make decisions for us. We make our own, so. I mean, he can recommend. We'll see if we go by his things, but I know we're violating our bylaws if we grant this.
But you, you understand the federal preemption, though?
I do understand that we have to grant it to you for communication. We have no, no right to say no. But however, I understand that.
Okay.
As a special permit, we can't say no where you wanna put a tower.
Okay, then...
But it doesn't mean also you could do it violating our bylaws. I understand, I'm sure the federal government will understand that as well. Troy, what do you think?
I have no questions at this time.
Veronica?
Would you explain to me why it's a variance and not a special permit?
Our bylaw says, and if you have a tower 100 feet, you have to have a radius of 100 in that center, and that tower should be in the center. If it fell, it falls in your 100-feet length. So they had 150, they have a radius for 150 for previous. Now they doing 163, or they had 153, they added 10 feet. If it falls, it'll fall on the neighbor by 10 feet or on Brown Street, which is mostly unlikely. It won't fall. I'm not saying, I'm, I'm sure they designed it very well, like the council, the council explained it. But that's why it should be a variance, I believe, unless you guys believe otherwise.
What's this, what's this 163 feet here?
That's his new radius.
That's his, the dotted line's the existing?
Nope.
Oh, I see, so this is...
Yeah, the existing tower's 150. We're proposing adding 10, sort of, under the bylaw, before it's preempted, the fall zone would be 160 feet. It's the, the top of the tower, not the antenna.
I understand.
So...
Which would encroach 6 feet over under the...
Right. That, that makes a variance, but I do not doubt your stat, that you meet the statute of...
Yeah, the similar analysis is, under the, under the Spectrum Act, if you had a height limit here of 150 feet, and we wanted to go above that, we could do that under federal law without a variance, but that's, uh...
I mean, I mean, I'm sure with the federal government, you do what you want, but it doesn't mean that we have to go by breaking our bylaws. Jimmy, what do you think?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm getting what you're saying. I think your concern is that you don't want it to be a defective application. They go forward, and then somebody goes over there and says, "Stop," because your application was defective.
Right.
You wanna make sure we cross the Ts and dot the Is. So that said, if, all we're worrying about is getting the minutia properly worded, in order for this to be non-defective, you're saying it would need to be re-advertized as, as a variance instead of as a special permit?
Correct.
So could we vote this evening in anticipation of a re-advertization, vote subject to a re-advertization?
No.
And, no?
No. That's very defective. It'd be very illegal.
It's defective, it's, so, so your suggestion is that we continue, let them re-advertise it?
Right, unless the four of you would think otherwise.
Well, okay, but the point is, let's try to figure out a solution so that we can...
Well, we'll get to that point. Like, give me a minute. Rich, what do you think?
Nothing at this time.
Anyone in the audience wanna speak on this matter? I see none, so now you guys decide.
So I would be interested to hear what town council said regarding the law and how it applies to our zoning law, whether, I mean...
Town council's gonna say, if, if they use the federal power, they'll say, yes, you could do it, whether you like it or not. That's what he's gonna say, but it would be a lot faster for them to go for a variance.
But it sounds like the applicant is saying that that statute makes it so that a variance is not required.
No, I don't believe so.
Well, our town council could probably clarify that, is what I meant. Maybe to have that, do, what do you think about our town council clarifying the statute? Supposedly that's, makes that.
Let's ask, what do you think, Commissioner?
The bylaws call out over 40 feet tall, new applications, special permit, zoning, DBA. That's what it says.
Yeah, but our bylaw calls also for towers, the radius of the height, right?
Correct.
Alright, what's your wishes, Troy? Are you with council or no?
No.
Now, I'm just trying to make your life easy.
No, no, no. By the way, regardless of, we need a special permit no matter what, correct, for wireless extension of the tower? Wouldn't...
Once you get the variance, it's a one-stop shop. You get around.
I think, I think, sir, that the issue here isn't 60 feet, 150, 160. The issue here is special permit versus variance. If you get a variance, you don't need a special permit. If we thought it was a special permit, then we wouldn't be talking variance. So we're, we're stuck on the word special permit, or the term special permit versus the term variance. If this whole thing read variance, we'd be acting.
Right. I'm, I granted that permit properly, me and him. The two of us were here. It was two minutes done.
In 2015?
Yeah.
My motion is gonna be...
What happened?
Because you were within the bylaws. I mean, we, we have nothing against it. I mean, we definitely need it. I'm not saying nothing.
Yep, I got you.
Absolutely, but I can't just, I can't just ignore the bylaw.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that I, I would put forth a motion that we continue, allow this to be re-advertized as a variance, and let them come back, and then we can act on it without it being defective.
That makes sense. How, how much time, Sonia, to re-advertise?
I need at least 30 days.
30 days. So if you start tomorrow, 30 days, you'll be back here.
It needs to advertise 21 days in the paper.
And I suggest you start ordering the tower and everything. Apparently, nobody's here against it. And I don't have a problem, as I wasn't before, but your structure engineer says it's safe, everybody's on board kinda, so it's just a matter of, so it's not infected, that's all.
Okay.
That sounds good?
Yep. Can I leave this letter with...
Absolutely.
Share with the board, please? Thank you.
What do you think, Rich?
So I would second Jim's motion.
Alright. So you wanna withdraw without prejudice to reapply?
Uh, yeah, that would be good.
Alright. Why don't you do that?
Do, do we wanna waive the reapplication fee or let them pay twice for...
They could afford it.
Actually, actually, no, actually, could we, could we ask, I'd, I'd ask for a continuance, and in the interim, and I would ask the board if you'd be okay with town council weighing in, and you can still do, as you say, you don't have to listen to him. And if we wanna apply for variance, because we think we need to, we will. Otherwise, we'll come back and talk about it in a month.
I tell you, if you could get to town council this week, and he get back to us this week by phone, it's probably a good idea, but I'm trying to buy you time. I'm trying to get you going quick. I don't know how fast he'll get back to you.
Yeah, could, could we, could we just ask for a continuance then?
Why don't we do this?
Till your next meeting.
You wanna continue the 27th and hope that you can...
Of, of December?
Yeah.
Um, could we do, what's your first meeting in January?
No, but my, this is my thing. If he says he's in agreement with us, you just lost 15 days, unless time is not in the essence for you.
Um, as long as we, as long as the board meets in the first or second week of January, that's fine.
We do.
Then that's fine.
So why don't you come back on the 27th? If he says...
I'm, I can't, I'm, I'm saying I have a conflict, I already know that.
You don't have to be here. If you, if he says you're good, you don't have to be here. We, we will act on it fairly, without you being here.
Okay.
I'm just trying to buy your time.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And if he doesn't, if he's, by then, he says, let's say he called me Monday, he says, you know what, you do what you want, so we'll, let Sonia let you know to start with the variance.
Exactly, okay.
So you don't waste time.
Fair enough.
And when you come back next time, you withdraw without prejudice, special permit, and we act on a variance. How's that?
Perfect.
Very well. Let's make a motion to continue till the 27th.
So moved.
I have a motion by Jim to continue the 27th. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Rich. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. We'll see on the 27th. Hopefully, we hear from you before.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Alright, 48-23, Thomas and Susan Daley, 4th Prospect Street. Alright, here we go.
You want to go to that?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Amazing how much paper. Imagine, imagine how much paper we'd had.
Sonia, see if you could reach out to Rich, quick.
Imagine how big this folder would be before there was computers, you know, and reduced all of the pay, paper reduction act and all that jazz.
People used to write all that and hand-type all that.
I lost my, lost my rubber band. Sorry, Sonia, this is the B. Hey, probably, oh, look what I did. I put it out there. Thank you for your patience. I'll be with you eventually. 22, alright, 22. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on December 13, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. in room 320 of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Roadway, HAMAS, 02571, to reconsider petition number 48-23 for two variances from the requirements of Article 6, Section 613 and 628, and Article 13, Section 1360, and Section 1361 under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Thomas B. Daley and Susan F. Daley, Halifax, care of Julian Morton Esquire of 184 Main Street, Wareham, Mass., proposing to demolish an existing 343-square-foot, one-story cottage and construct a 1,497-square-foot, three-story second principal building located at 4 Prospect Street, Wareham, Mass., which appears on Assessors Map 3, 195A, 196A, 197A, 198A in the MR30 zoning district.
Very well, Counselor, and let's hear it.
Great attorney, Julian Morton, 184 Main Street. I'm here representing the Daleys. I have Brian Grady here from GAF Engineering to answer engineering questions and, and give a little bit of information on what we're trying to do here. So in essence, we have a property that has a, a current single-family structure on it, three-bedroom, and we're looking to take, there's a second structure on there that we believe is a cottage that actually has rental history with the town, and demolish that to create a second functional property for the Daleys. So just some history, and always I include and start with the commissioner's denial letter, just to get you a framework of where we're at. We have two variances that we're looking for. I'm gonna start with the second one, because you're very familiar with FAR. We're in MR30, but I would argue that if you know this area, it's very close to onset, so it's, it's very close to that village district. So most of these lots are very close to one another. So FAR, I took like an average of the surrounding area. The, the average is around 60%. Again, you've seen many cases with that FAR come up. In MR30, the max we can have is 17, but adding this additional, demolishing the cottage and adding this additional structure, I believe it was, what, 26.7? Is that correct?
Correct.
Percent? So a little shy of, of 10% increase on FAR. We definitely think that that was warranted, and one of the reasons being, we need to have the amount of livable area for bathroom, bedroom, all those things. Currently, we're in, we have a 343-square-foot cottage, which has a bathroom, bedroom, kitchen. And we can go into the nuances. I know that the commissioner just gave me a memorandum regarding cottages, and I know we've had discussions about that, so. So FAR, I believe, is definitely warranted in this area, looking at the surrounding properties as well, and the actual subdivision that was created. They were actually four lots. You can see it's, it's 195A, 196A, 197A, and 198A. So these old division, subdivision was like four lots. So we're in, in the realm of both sides of that street, basically having a three-bedroom there. So the big one really is the, the two dwellings on Mulatt. And, you know, we can discuss if it's hinging on, is this a cottage, is it not? And we have information from our clients who have owned it for a while, as well as previous owners, that this was even inspected by Board of Health, which, as you know, on a rental, the health agent has to go in, you pay the $100 fee for the inspection. So we have that history there. There actually was a stove in there and heating sources. I know that was removed, my client told me. So this is very similar to some recent cases, which I would argue, again, it's very fact-dependent. So this is a, a part of our bylaw that does not define cottage, and it kinda goes back to this is something that probably should go in our bylaw. But in this instance, the Daleys, just to bring it back down to what, you know, who are they? And, and they are looking to have a place that'd be able to, to stay year-round. Obviously, this is in an area that, you know, warrants their children, their grandchildren. So having just the three-bedroom on one side and then this small cottage, it's not conducive to a place that you'd be able to retire and be, be uncomfortable. Another thing I just wanna point out is I know that the commissioner had said it's a three-story dwelling. In essence, what we're looking to do is have a first floor, a full-size, and a second floor, and then an attic. So this is not a space that'd be livable, and it is under the 35 feet. So we're not looking for a variance on height there. So that's a little bit about the project, in essence. So we have the plans here, and, you know, if you want Brian to go through that, to show the nuances, but again, MR30, but really close to OV, so it's, it's sort of, you think of all those lots right next to one another.
Okay, very well. This is down near the Marina, correct?
Yeah, and it's right over that line with the OV, and then the, it goes right to MR30 when you cross the bridge.
Alright.
Well, the only thing I will add to that is just kinda give you some dimensional history. These lots go back, I believe, to 1890. These lots first show up on a survey plan of record. And if you are familiar with this neighborhood, it's fairly dense because of the history, because of the age. Some of the homes are on double lots, some of them are on single lots. So zoning changed over this neighborhood at some time, increasing it to MR30. But this, this property consists of four of the original lots. They have joined through merger over time, and the total, it totals 10,403 square feet. Pretty much 53 by 200 feet or so are the dimensions of the property. And so those are the dimension, that's the dimensional history, and that's the age of the survey and the lots in the area and the density in the area.
One other thing I'd like to add that reminded me, and it's actually a great visual for you guys, on exhibit three of my package, I just wanna show you the amount of abutters to this property. And then the next page will show you kind of the assessors, so you can see the density of that Brian's talking about. And I mean, I, I think I would, through the chair, ask Ms. Raposa how much, how many abutters notices over 50, something like that. And I haven't, I mean, maybe I could be proven wrong, but that there's not been any negative feedback or anything. The back of your packet has all the abutters, and I know that my clients have more in their hands tonight. So, I mean, I'm looking more than 10 or so here, so they don't see it as a detriment to the neighborhood.
Okay. Now, the field card says single family, not two families, right?
Um, so the field card, I believe they get in...
I see, right, it says single family.
Are you looking at the field card right now in your packet? I included that, hold on.
Is it a single family in, in two structures, or is it two families?
Single, um, yep. So if you look at the... Yep, so if you look at the existing conditions that GAF has, it's on Prospect Street, a single family, and then there's the structure that's the cottage.
My question is, are the residents of the house, are the residents of both structures of the same family?
Yes, correct.
And is there a deed restriction saying that, would there be a deed restriction saying that this could never be separated?
There is currently not one, but that could be something that you decide about within a condition of the variance.
It's, which fault? What do you think? Troy, I mean, I'm sorry. Troy?
I don't have anything at this time.
Veronica?
So, currently, so this is a variance to increase the FAR, so it's currently inconformant, and it's...
Just two variances, the FAR and to create another residence, right?
So, I have a question about that. If this is MR30 where a second multifamily is allowed, why is that? Wouldn't that be a special permit and not a variance?
No, if you need, you need MR30, 45,000 square feet and 250 feet.
It's not a small lot exemption here on this property?
No, because it's not in that onset, sorry to interrupt, it's not in that onset small lot district, even though it is kind of in that area. And you're correct, so the existing FAR, just, it's on the plan, but just you can see it was 15.6? That's how we did it, divided by lot area, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, we are, and 17 is the max, and we are looking for a little less than 10, an increase on FAR, but it's still 26.7, and I know that I've had many properties that were well over 50%. And usually, FAR is a density bylaw. So, what people are concerned about is how many people are gonna be in one area, and how is this gonna affect the rest of the neighborhood? We have 50-plus people who haven't, at least, that I know of right now, have no problem with it. Another thing is there's sewer coming off of Prospect Street that goes to the cottage, so there's existing flow there. Just another piece of the puzzle for you to think about, so.
All right, let's, so you worry about the density, that's on FAR. For, that's a variance, and the second variance for a second dwelling, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, Richard, what do you think?
I just see here, you know, we have description of, Paul's handed us a description of what we consider a cottage and what's a livable space. But it seems like the town has described it as a cottage, so it's not an accessory building, so they're taxing it as a cottage, so I'm figuring it's a cottage, so.
Oh, yeah.
I'm good at this point with this.
As a single family, though, there, it's not taxed as a double family.
If I may, through the chair-
Yes, go ahead.
I believe there's two separate, we have actually right here the information. If Ms. Debonis wants to see it, it does say cottage and single family. Do you have that in front of you? See on the-
If you go past that and go to the next page on the bottom, it says "single, single family" under there.
Yep. But it-
I thought it was.
Oh, I see, it's referring to that, that looks to be like a shed to me, that was-
It's just missing, see?
Okay.
Would, would you see cottage?
Yeah, I'm not seeing cottage anywhere.
Do you want to show them? It was the printout, right?
Yeah. All the way back to this piece of paper.
I get that.
It says "single family."
All right, so. All right, so I guess it's déjà vu again for what you came here before.
Yeah, and I understand that the predicament that this does put on the town. I understand that slippery slope argument, but that's why the Commissioner can deny these and the factual basis can come in front of you. Clearly, something that I think that the town, it should go in within the bylaw. So, I don't think there's detrimental harm with, if this is approved, that you're gonna, again, get all these people coming in, trying to get these cottages approved, because you're gonna be able to listen to the facts of the case and what's, what's relevant and what fits.
What's this cottage has? Does it have, is there a stove, hot water, shower?
My client actually has some pictures. This is Mr. Tom Daly. It did have a stove, and you can explain that.
Just your name for the record, sir.
Yes, good evening. My name's Tom Daly, with my wife, Susan, who is here with me. We are the owners of 4 Prospect Street. Just to add to that history, when we purchased this property, it was just about the same time as the town was putting the sewer in. And through the abatement process and all of those types of things that were going on, and not to make this longer, but it was two actual addresses of Gray Street that the two properties were on that we purchased as one. They were being used that way. The decision was made by Sewer and Water that they wanted it all on Prospect Street, so they changed the address for us. So, the two buildings became that one as 4 Prospect Street. So, I mean, that's the direction. We do have photos if you haven't had the chance, but.
So, what is he speaking to? Is he see like that paper street? And they were two separate, if I may approach, so you can, you can see the board?
Thank you. Yeah, these were the tax, I think.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Nice property.
So, there's, I'm looking at it, I'm looking at it. I'm looking at it on Google.
Thank you.
Well, I guess if you're asking for a variance for a second dwelling, I mean, I do understand the Commissioner memo, but I guess it doesn't apply right here if you're asking for a variance. So, here we are, need a variance. Is MR30 has a FAR? It does?
I believe it's because it's a pre-existing older lot. It's-
Was that on Table 6? Is that on 6, Paul?
I think so.
For the existing small lots, I think from 10,000 to 15,000, it's 17%.
Ah, okay.
You have it noted, Brian, that it's the same for any MR30? On the drawing, it says 17% for an MR30 or a small lot MR30?
Well, it's under the note that says "dimensional standards for existing small lots," from 10,000 to 15,000.
So... Am I not understanding this? This? You have on your drawing zoning data.
Right, zoning.
I'm just looking at what you have noted here. It says zoning data for zone MR30 setback, and at the bottom, floor area ratio 17%. Then you have dimensional standard for existing small lots, FAR 17%. So, it's the same.
Well, it's not the same. It, it, that 17% just comes from below. We, we probably could have left it off there and just left in, under the MR30, we probably could have ta-, sure, should have taken that off, as you're pointing out, and just left it under the, the note for the 10,000 to 15,000. But it is 17%.
Because it doesn't apply, apply to the MR30?
Right.
In, in a regular. So, what would be the standard for an MR30 for?
I think it's NA, there's no-
Yeah, I don't-
Yeah, so we're looking at 628, which is the existing small lots within the bylaw. That was that one red that was newly created this past year, but let's look MR30, I think it's NA, honestly. That's a R. Yeah.
Well, anyway, the stick was your homework, so you need a variance, let's keep it this way. All right, before we go more with the board, anyone in the audience, on the public, wanna speak in favor of this matter? In favor? Here none, against this matter? Anyone here wanna speak against this project? Nobody?
To where-
That's a good thing, usually.
To where a stack of, I'm in favor of letters.
How many?
Yep, I missed, I think like over 10.
Okay, for the record, Jimmy, can you-
10 to 20, I mean, one.
Jimmy, can you just read just the names for the, who's in favor?
Someone has their hand up in the public.
There's, there's a, there's somebody waving at you, Nazia, I don't know if the-
Wanna come forward, ma'am?
Oh, yeah, here's an abutter.
So, I got-
No, yeah, but.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Rossi, and I live across the street from Number 4 Prospect Street, at Number 7 Prospect Street. I've been a resident here full-time since 2006, and have known Tom and Sue since the day I moved in. That's who they are. They're wonderful neighbors. Their property is absolutely beautiful. And I couldn't imagine better caretakers for their own property as a great reflect, a great reflection of this town. So, I definitely am in favor of your granting, whatever the right terminology is, for variances or permissions or whatever. I can't imagine that there would be any reason that you would vote against this. So, thank you very much for considering my, my words for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Sure.
Anyone else? Jimmy, for the record, you wanna read those who's in favor? Just the names.
I'm, ten, I'm counting them, 11. 12 pieces of paper with multiple signatures. 1, 2, 3, 4 people signing this one in favor. Habernast, they don't say their address. Oh, they're, they're at 15 Nanomet, 28 Nanomet. We have 2 people. It looks like Vera is the signer. 1 Mason Street, Brasset, or something like that. 2 signers. Andrews Street, 1 signer, 34 Andrews Street, 27 Andrews Street. 2 signers, 2 different last names. Andrews Street, again, 38, 2 signers, same last name. 12 Prospect, 2 signatures. Looks like probably husband and wife, again, 2, same last name. 11 Prospect. 1, 2, 2 different names, 2 different last names. And then Eric and Camp on, I'm sure they give their address, but it's another in favor. I don't want to try to search the letter to find where they live. Rossi, that's the lady that just spoke, I believe. She's in here. Alfonso, it's 6 Prospect Street, 5 Prospect Street. Pagnow, I think. Here's another one, Tolczynski, 2 Prospect. Looks like everybody in the neighborhood is, oh, here's another one. 4 people signed this one. 4 different last names. Nope, 3 different last names. And that's 1 Prospect Street. So, they've either got the whole neighborhood fooled, or they're nice people.
You missed it by 400 square feet, you'd be 25%. Can I see that? What are you asking for, 26%?
26.7.
Correct, 26.7, yep.
I personally like it that you come forward for a variance, you're not arguing the cottage matter, so. I like it like this personally. We'll see if we go back to the board. Troy, what do you think? I'm okay with it personally for both.
I have no problem with it.
Veronica?
I don't see the hardship to make this a variance. I know what the feeling is regarding the FAR in general by a lot of members of the board, but I think it's there for a reason, and... I do have a question, though, about why this would be, because it says, well, there's 2 variances for the dwelling, right? So, what is the reference to a small lot? If this is not a small lot and doesn't have the exemption?
A small lot, if the, when you talk about exemption, if there was no building on it at all, then it's like a grandfather, if that's what you're trying to refer to.
Right, the building rights become grandfathered based on prior ownership and contiguous or non-contiguous ownership of the budding lots. Then, but that's when we're talking about small lots.
There's a, there's a building on it now.
So, I guess I'm, what I'm getting at is-
This is existing non-conforming.
So, whether or not that cottage is considered a dwelling is definitely, so they wouldn't need a variance if?
If, if the cottage, we're gonna argue it's a house, they don't need a variance for a two-family.
But even if it's not, according to the existing small lot, right?
No. It's according to 30,000 square feet, you have to go by the zoning.
So, well, that's what I'm saying. Why is it being referred to as an existing small lot if it doesn't fall within those perimeters of 10,000 to 15,000 square feet and having the ability to have the multi?
Those 10 to 15 just for the FAR, that's it, that's what they for.
The small, the small lot exemptions are just for the FAR?
For the FAR, that's in the bylaw.
Your question is, why is it referred to as an existing?
No, I was just getting at, why is it considered a variance if it's meeting, if it has small lot standards that it's meeting? Right, it falls under the small lot standard, and it says a small lot standard, it's giving the square footage.
Right, but right now-
Family is also under that small lot exemption status.
Right, now, if they were above, you in compliance with the, right now, right, with the FAR?
Yeah.
They in compliance. If they were not in compliance, they can extend their non-compliance.
Right, so I understand that part. I'm talking about the second residence.
Second residence, you need 45,000 square feet, even though it's an existing lot, 10,000.
I just don't see the hardship for either one.
Well, if it's-
Okay, I understand that, but you understand you need 40, that's, that's what they need.
Is it a second residence, or is it, what, that, is that, is that the argument here, or is that the?
Right.
So, here's my position. We've been talking about this for a long time, and I've heard, I believe I've heard 4 favorable votes and 1 potentially dissenting vote. If I'm correct, we could save ourselves a lot of time and take a vote. I move to close the public portion of this hearing.
If I may, let me listen to Richard one more time. What do you think?
Oh, I'm good with this.
You're good with it? Okay, all right, you want a motion?
My motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Any discussion on the closing? You're none. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Richard, all in favor to close, say aye. Troy? Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Okay, now it's up to the, the board to talk. You guys want to chat, or you want another motion?
Well, I, I do want to just say that-
Yeah.
These are 2 variances, that neither one, we have no hardships. That's all I want to say.
Well, I, I do agree what you're saying. However, like the Counselor said, looking at the area, I think this is the biggest lot around it. Don't you agree? It's pretty much the biggest lot around.
Yeah, I mean, and you close the public, but if you want to reopen it so we can talk about the hardship particularly?
No, that's fine. No, we don't need to.
Okay.
Motion to approve as presented, granting relief as requested. Set up the standard conditions.
For both variances?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion by Jim. Anyone would like to second? Second by Troy. So, we have a motion by Jim to grant the variance for the FAR from 15%. These are small numbers, from, from 15 to 26, Brian?
15.7.
26 to 15.
26.7.
To 26.7, and we have also a variance for the lot area and frontage, correct, Counselor?
For the, note for the second dwelling.
For second dwelling?
Yeah.
It's lot and frontage. How much, yeah, you need lot and frontage for the second dwelling. So, that's the motion by Mr. Akabachi. So, and it's second by who? Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy? Veronica?
Deny.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
I'm gonna say aye. Wish-
Thank you.
I wish Mr. Daly and his wife, that's a lot.
I didn't mean to make brief of it, I just felt, you know, if I could... If I'm gonna do it, let's do it. Anything else to turn in? This part of that, do you want that in the folder?
I, I don't care.
You don't need it, right?
Barry, just, can you put on the granting, that does meet statutory requirement of Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right. All right.
That was four, one, zero, right?
Ah, four, one, zero, correct.
Oh, I need to write that down.
Patty, that was four, one, zero. On the signature page, just put Veronica is no.
Is it? Yeah, four, one, zero.
Patty's still doing the minutes, right?
What's that?
All right, very well. We're gonna move to. Which one now? Forty-nine dash twenty-three, Kelsey McKenna and Jonathan Dalmer, appeal five oh four Main Street.
Thank you. There you go. One for myself. Zoning Board of Appeals to hold a public hearing on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM in room three twenty of the Wareham Multi-Service Center, forty-eight Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., zero two five seven one. To reconsider. Am I reading the wrong one?
Yeah.
We did a reconsider before, didn't we? This is another reconsider?
That's a typo.
Huh? Forty-nine, twenty-three? Is that what we're on?
Yeah.
Okay. Petition forty-nine, twenty-three for the appeal building inspector notice of violation regarding minimum water area per the requirements of MGL, Chapter forty-eight, fifteen, under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Kelsey McKenna and Jonathan C. Dalmer of Care of Jillian Morton Esquire at one eighty-four Main Street, Wareham, Mass. For the property located at five oh four Main Street, Wareham, Mass. Assesses map sixty-one, lot one, one, seven, two, B in the MR thirty zoning district.
Very well, counselor, let's hear it.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Jillian Morton, I'm here representing the owners of five oh four Main Street. That's what you heard, Kelsey McKenna and Jonathan Dalmer. So what I'm here for is an appeal from the notice of violation now. I want to make sure that you have, in the initial packet, I didn't have this, the commissioner had a secondary letter. Do you have that in front of you?
You say, you say it's not in the packet?
Because it came after I appealed. Does Mr., do you have it?
Yeah, October fourth.
So you turned these in and you're asking if.
No, Mr.
It was stamped November sixteen?
No, what, all I'm saying is Mr. Turner wrote another supplemental letter that is online.
Not the October four letter?
No, I posted it on the town website.
We got a September twenty-five, we've got two letters in our packet. One is dated September twenty-fifth, one is dated October four.
Just a typo, so, but there was an actual one that came last week, I believe. It was.
October four.
Okay.
Nope, November.
We have, we have one, okay.
So these two are not.
So I'll get it to them.
Yeah, just.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so they got it in the email. I just want to make sure we have the initial packet.
I've seen that one.
Okay, great. Awesome.
All right, let's proceed.
Exactly. So this property.
Oh, I know what this one is. Okay.
Okay. This property is, if you can imagine, going towards the town green, the big beautiful white house that has been renovated and actually has a carriage house in the back. And then there's a vacant lot next door. You can visualize it, there's actually a swing set and there's some stakes in the ground. So this started actually prior to my clients owning the property. I don't want to go too much into the nuance of the builder and the person who, who did sell it to them, because that's a separate legal matter that we're pursuing, but at this point, they purchased the property and they're here tonight. Kelsey and John wanted to find a property that they would be able to raise their family as well as have their elderly parents in, and close to them. So when they saw this property come up, they were very excited. The builder had proposed and given them written specs that the carriage house would be a second, like would be a second unit that the parents would be able to be in. So they proceeded, went through, they purchased. Prior to that, just kind of going back, is that this actually was one big lot. And the builder decided to go through a Form A process with the planning board to be able to split the lots into two conforming, single-family lots. So they're both conforming, but then he rebuilt the five oh four house and put a meat, and put a carriage house. What does that do that makes it non-conforming? Because you need to have forty-five thousand square feet to have two dwellings on that. None of this is anything that the, my clients knew about. So they're, they come into a position that, and rightly so, the commissioner needs to deny this because it's a non-conforming, it's a violation of our bylaw. But the problem is, is what happened is that we tried to go through the process to purchase some of the lot next door to try to make this conforming. Unfortunately, no negotiations, no negotiations went anywhere with that. And now we're in a position that if we don't have this approved, the hardship is extremely great. The carriage house is a space that her, the parents are and where they live. So there's a kitchen, bathroom, bedroom in there, and it was sold to them as a second unit. I understand you're in a little bit of predicament because this isn't necessarily anything you created, but it's in front of you now. We would ask the board to grant a variance because of the hardships that we have here, as well as the secondary letter, which is talking about infectious invalidity. And what that is, and I appreciate that the commissioner, he's not a land use attorney, this isn't anything that he needs to argue, and perhaps if you want town council or if he's talked to town council, weigh in on. But what, what it is essentially is that it occurs when a property is divided without regard of local zoning. And I, and I don't think the forum is to argue against the builder or, or anything, that's a separate forum we're gonna pursue, but he knew what was happening. So this wasn't something that they bought the property and then they decided we're gonna put in the carriage house after. So to have the harm of my, of my clients have to rip that out and make it, you know, just a carriage house or a garage, it's, it's really unfair and it would, it would cause a lot of harm. So that's a little bit in the nutshell of everything. Feel free to ask questions.
I'm very aware of the, of this matter and my question is, when they bought this property, didn't their title searcher or their title insurance look if there's a variance or special permit issued for that lot, for that, for a second unit?
So that I know, obviously, because I'm a title attorney, that we do not search on that. That's a separate zoning requirement. And the seller signed documents that says, you know, again, I don't want to go into it, but that said that they, it was conforming. And this isn't just, this, it goes more into, again, the litigation, but I think it would be behoove the town and not have the town in a liability standpoint. If you deny this, we have no, we have to go appeal it. We have to continue on and it's more damages for the client. There's no question.
Is, is the, is the second lot still owned by the other?
Correct.
But I, I think you have a very strong case for this gentleman because there's a three separate building permit. On each building permit, he lies on the square footage. And when he went to the planning board to get a Form A, he also lied.
Correct.
That he has a second dwelling that is short, seven, eight thousand square feet, roughly eight thousand.
Yeah, I've watched it. I mean, I almost thought about bringing the chairman, Mr. King, here because the, I don't know if there would talk. But he had said he knew it's a carriage house, I don't know what I want to do with it, and he said, I know if I want to do something, I need to come back to a board.
Right.
That's on public record. So again, that's a separate matter. I don't necessarily want to go into that to make sure we save their rights, but the town's point of view on this, it's, it's within his right to deny it, but I don't think that this is something that should be denied because, you know, you worry about precedent of two family on these lots, because this is a very specific situation.
And, and if you think of it the other way, if we grant them a variance, that's mean we're granting the guy who scammed them, I think he scammed them a lot.
No, that's what the letter you have in front of you says. I mean, if Mr. Turner would like to talk about it, it says that infectious invalidity makes it so that lot is not buildable. If you created the issue, that lot will not be buildable now. And if you look, it's been taxed, I mean, it's, it's worth eight.
Can I ask you?
Finish up, please.
Yes, so it creates an infection. Think of an infection, right? So this lot, and this is what the commissioner is looking into, and he can maybe speak to if he talked to attorney Bowen, but from our point of view, you have a great argument that he would not be able to build that, which is.
All right, Jimmy, what do you?
I'm just, just as I'm following along, I want to make sure I'm following along. Sometimes we can get things twisted in our own brain.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I never even smoke the funny stuff and I get twisted in my brain. So you got two lots here. Which one's your client? The one with the house and the carriage shed?
Correct.
Okay, so your client has got a notice saying you got two families and you shouldn't have.
Correct.
Tear one down.
Tear one down.
Is it, tear it down or do they just have to move out and turn it into a garage?
Decommission.
Decommission it.
Decommission it, okay. Don't have to necessarily tear it. Okay. So you're here, just, I just, you're here tonight saying, please don't make us move out of our house.
If you deny it, we're gonna peel it, so they're not moving out. You know, just to be very frank with you.
Trying to put it in simple terms. I'm a simple-minded guy. Okay. I just, so.
Yes, you see the pork chop lot, they went to the planning board.
The yellow one, the red one originally owned everything and he did this. The guy had a plan.
All right.
So it's pretty easy. I can see what went on now. Okay, I just want to make sure I had it right in my head.
Let me, Commissioner, how can we guarantee that if we grant this variance, the other lot is not buildable? It has thirty thousand, has a hundred fifty feet of frontage.
By the definition of infectious invalidity.
So if he comes to you and asks for build permit, you're gonna deny it based on invalidity, infectious invalidity?
Correct.
Is there any way we could do this?
The letter that you have in front of you, excuse me, the letter you have in front of you, the second one, the last one I wrote, I thought it was in your packet, so.
I read it online. But let me ask you something. Is there a way we could take a decision on this and record it? Is there such thing we could?
In the deed, you mean? Yeah.
I mean, here we are now, ten years from now.
Yeah.
I understand. I spoke to attorney Bowen and his response to me was, my conclusion in that last letter that you have there is supportable. That's all he, all he said.
So I get it through you.
Need that last.
So I guess what your concern, Nazee, Mr. Chairman, is that the original owner says, okay, I know how to play this game, I'll wait ten years, I'll wait for this commissioner to be gone, I'll wait for this zoning board to be gone, and I'll come back.
Yeah.
Right.
And, you know, it's worth my ten years because then it'll be a quarter million dollar lot and I can wait.
Right.
And you want to say, we don't want you to wait. We want to tell you no now.
Are you pursuing this matter? Are you pursuing the?
All I'm gonna say to that is that I don't think that's something you guys can decide to record something on his lot, but that could be something in the future that we'd be looking into. So that's not your authority because it's, this is, and I, that, I know why you're saying that, because what if a buyer comes in and they think they have a buildable lot? And, and that's not good for the public. How would they know unless they watch this hearing or, or looked at the abutters lot?
Yeah, and the average person, if I, if somebody presented to me, I think it's buildable, I'll buy it right away.
If I may, I think, Ms. Debonis, do you need to pick that letter?
I'm trying to see the letter, yeah.
Yeah, there's only one copy of that.
Oh.
Sorry, there's only one copy.
Sorry.
Thank you for being, seeing that.
Yeah, she was like.
Troy, what do you think?
I, I kind of, I'm on the same page as you. No, sorry. I have an issue with that other lot and I want to make sure that it's never buildable.
Right. Richard, what do you think?
I, I echo Troy's feelings.
Von Kasse, what do you think? Jim?
I understand the board's positions. I just feel as though, we're talking about lot A. What's in front of us is lot B.
Right.
And if lot B is in front of us, I don't understand how me like us saying, yeah, okay, but we're gonna go down to McDonald's and tell them they can only have one speaker at the drive-thru because it's, one has not, you know, you know, we, we.
Right, but my concern.
We're stepping outside our.
Right. My, my concern is if I, which is, I really think.
I get it. I get what you're concerned.
If I really, which I really believe they should get the variance, I'll give you the variance, you put it to sleep, you don't chase the other guy. And then ten years from now, they sell the house, the lot to somebody, and then we have, we have a problem. Now, if I don't give you the variance, you're gonna be forced to sue that guy for fraud.
Yep.
Unless we give you the variance and you promise you'll sue him.
And, and I don't know if we have that right either, but I get what you're saying.
Before we go forward, anyone in the public want to speak in favor of the variance, of the variance, what she, what the attorney wants? Come forward, please. Just state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Kelsey McKenna and I live at five oh four Main Street. I purchased the house a couple of years ago with the intention of moving in my disabled veteran father and my mom, who's a retired school teacher, so they could be closer to me so I could help out with them and they could help raise my kids, who are six, four, and two. We love our property. It's a historic house. We got it registered with the Wareham Historic Society. And up until this fall, we had no idea that our home was in violation. We still adore our home and have tried to keep with the original appearance of the house. And so we hope that we can continue to have my parents living right next door to us, so I can help them and they can continue to help us as my kids grow.
I totally understand and I feel for you and I know you get scammed. We just, we're all with you. We just, I believe we're all with you. We just want to figure out what's the best way to do.
And, and just. If I might.
Yeah.
I just want to say, as I drove by during the process of you guys acquiring and renovating, you did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else want to speak in favor?
I'm in favor.
You have to come up and say.
You just gotta come, just state your name and address, you could just.
My name's Alan Visser. I live at five twenty-five Main Street. I got the other little house that I just bought, that one just before COVID. And I'm a veteran too, so once I heard that, I'm good with it. And I don't like fraud, so, you know, that's, that's who I am. Anyways, you guys, but besides that, I really, really am impressed at your thoroughness and the job you're doing.
Thank you.
You know, I, it's why I came here. My friends were saying, you don't even have to go there, but I want to know who's representing us here.
Yes.
I'm grateful to you. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. That being said, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good evening. My name is Patty Wilson. I'm Kelsey's mom.
Yes.
And I live in the carriage house. Please don't take it away. Basically, it was presented when she bought it as a livable space. It's got electric plumbing, it's got all the stuff, kitchen, bathroom. So I would say to the, I would ask the board to give her the variance because it's gonna change the the nature, the historical nature of the, of the property if they get rid of the carriage house, because it does have historical value.
All right, very well. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, anyone against this matter? Anyone want to speak against? I hear none.
If I may, just say one more thing, because I, I understand the catch twenty-two here. So one of the things that's, that's hard as far as the variance goes, that if it's denied, obviously, we have to bring it to Superior Court. Just going into that litigation, though, they are gonna, and everyone knows, the Superior Court will look at the circumstances surrounding everything. So, you know, to put my clients through, you know, did you vote arbitrarily and capriciously? Which, if you're looking at all the facts that have been presented to you, I don't think that they could argue that you, that you would if you agreed to this. So, I mean, it's a hard thing for me to, you know, get a denial and then us have to bear the costs and my clients.
We don't want your client to wear this cost. I, I would like to personally, we'll see if the board agree, we'll continue this matter. And I want to make sure, I catch attorney Bowen, ask him a couple of questions. I got a friend who's a retired judge, I'll ask him the question as well. And we'll see, and maybe if you guys know attorneys, you could ask him, how, what can we do?
I have a suggestion.
I had another one to go.
So there's no rule in Wareham that says you can't have two kitchens in one house. Am I correct or incorrect?
Right, I know where you're going. I just not making. Right, I know where you're going, and I just, not my concern, we all for the.
Where am I going?
You're trying to give it to them with our vans. My concern, I don't want the other house, the lot, become buildable.
My question is, if there was a walkway between these two structures, whether pergola or gazebo type structure or something, would it be all one structure?
Yeah, but they'll be spending 100 grand to do it.
And then, what's the repercussion for the person that did this?
Exactly.
None.
None.
Yeah, another thought I had.
He could pay them that 100 grand for that walkway.
Go ahead, counsel.
Was that the fact that this was created through a form A process in front of the planning board? I don't know if the planning board has retribution to be able to speak to that, that would be something I would talk to your town planner about, to, if they could pull back that. I, I don't know what they can do as far as that.
You really can't, I tell you what, the planning board, even right now, they know there is, they could still legally make a form A, doesn't make it a buildable lot.
No, yeah.
They could really, you could, even with this problem, they could say, you know what, give me form A, the planning, the zoning, planning board say, I'll give it to you, but because you're the same owner, automatically merges, because it's non-conforming.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I have Ken Buckman.
Yeah, we'll get to him one sec. So, so it just that whoever owned the trust really cheated in every application he did. Yes, Kenny?
I just wanted to reinforce your comment that the, the planning board actually can't stop them from submitting an application for a form A lot that is illegal. If it meets the criteria that it has frontage on a way, that's, it's a public way. So they had to approve it, even though it created something that was illegal.
Right, correct, thank you, Ken. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they still have to, but to create it doesn't mean it's buildable.
Mm-hmm.
Unfortunately, the guy was not honest, and he went, sold that, and all these applications, saying, oh, I have 66,000 square feet for duplex, I have 66 something, 67 some thousand. So, like I said, we're all for you, ma'am, and your mother and your parents, so we're going to try, do the best we can, but we got to sleep on and ask you a question, it's not going nowhere right now, so it's not like you have to decommission it right now. So why don't we continue this to the 25th?
Do we need to take any kind of action to stay the notice of violation or anything?
No, it's, it's, it doesn't need to, right?
There's no per day fine or anything like that?
It's an open public hearing, nobody can take it, nobody can do anything.
No, I just.
No, nobody, it's fine.
I want them to put their head on the pillow and go to sleep.
You're fine, you could sleep well. Let's continue this, I'll give you a call next week, we'll talk about it.
December 27th, correct?
27.
You said the 25th.
It's 27, sorry.
Christmas here.
Ho, ho, ho.
All right, so let's continue this, whoever was here, you will never get another second notice, so if you want to attend again, you won't be notified by the town, so you just got to show up, if you wish to show up. All right, so can we get a motion?
So moved.
So we get a motion by Rich to move.
To continue this meeting to the 27th?
Right, 49-23, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. We'll continue, and if you don't hear from me Monday, give me a call, we'll discuss it further. Thank you, counsel. All right, 50-23 Athletics, Echo Athletics LLC, 127 Marion Road.
I'm going to find documents that don't even belong in the big old office.
All right, you guys got to take it outside, please.
You're going to pass something down to me, Rich, and through Naz? Naz, he needs to give me his, yeah, there we go. Thank you. We got to get, I got to get the other folder out, so.
Outside, please, if you want to talk, so.
All right.
That's all right. All right, very well, let's move to 50-23.
No re. Here we go. There we go. One for me. Is this the last one?
No, we still have to discuss.
Oh, we still have our own thing, yeah. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on December 13th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571. To consider petition number 50-23 for a use variance from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320, under the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Echo Athletics LLC of Seven Trout Farm Way, West Wareham, Mass., proposing to operate a fitness facility located at 127 Marion Road, West Wareham, Mass. That appears on assessors map, 60 lot A1 in the commercial strip zoning district.
All right, I need, I need your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Ben Tompkins from Seven Trout Farm, West Wareham.
And Zach Lettigar from 37 Cranberry Way, Marion.
All right, so I want to explain to us what you're trying to do.
Yeah, so we are the owners of Echo Athletics, we're presenting today for use variance for a fitness facility within the Wareham Plaza in the old Family Dollar storefront that's been vacant for, I think, about four or five years now, something along the lines of that.
Yeah.
So it's not allowed use in a shopping plaza, or?
What is the fault?
No, it's, CS is the only one that it's not allowed in.
You look through the whole chart, you get to that point in Sparta, just.
You can sell food, but you can't, you can't go exercise.
Exactly.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah, you can put a golf course in there, we can pick, put a pickleball course in there if we want.
Don't put an athletic or a tennis ball.
Yeah. We're not responsible for decisions made prior to a membership on the board.
If you really want to fix the bylaw, you need to book that thick.
Yeah, to fix the bylaw, you'd make, yeah, yeah, I get you.
All right, let's start, Troy, what do you think?
I don't have a problem with it.
Veronica?
I don't have any questions.
I, um.
Jimmy?
Unless I have here some objections to the contrary, I say, let's not spend a lot of time on it, let's get this done.
Richard?
Well, I'm glad to see that something's going in, since the body clinic left, there hasn't been anything for anybody to work out and add into the town, so I'm all for it.
All right. Anyone in the public want to speak against this matter? Anyone in favor? Just got to come forward if you want to speak. Sit down, state your name and address.
Of course, yeah. Michael Karen, 101 Bulvent Farm Road, Marion. Just want to speak to the character of these, these two gentlemen here, so I've known them for about six years, they've been fitness coaches before, my wife and I, Kara, who's sitting in the back of the room as well, have been going to an 8:30 class at Seaside CrossFit, unfortunately, that closed, but Zach was the coach, and I think that more than just fitness, physical fitness, they're individuals that are focused on personal growth. I've seen so many great cases of people doing so well from his coaching, you know, at the 8:30 class, when we go, it's pretty much people 40s, 50s, 60s years old, it's very physically fit people, and there's people that aren't physically fit, it's their first day ever working out, and I think the way that Zach approaches it is, again, personal growth, I've seen many success stories, become police officers, police officers in Wareham, I've seen, you know, kids that were really troubled at Wareham High School, turn around and develop confidence and become good individuals, going on to, you know, be Division One athletes. So a lot of good comes out of that gym and from some Zach's coaching. So I think it's more about, you know, personal growth, mind, body, spirit, and not just physical fitness, so, and I think he's going to do the same in this Echo Fitness right here in Wareham, I think he's going to really represent the town well. So I can't speak enough about these two individuals, I think they're going to do a good job.
So you're here to say that they're a couple of characters?
Exactly, exactly.
You said you were here as a character witness.
I think they're going to do great and, and represent the town very well. So, so thanks for your time, you know, I respectfully ask that you grant this variance this evening, and thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak in favor? I hear none. It's a great compliment for the general, but usually the permits go for the property, not the people, but it adds up, being a good keeper adds up.
So I make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Any discussion on that? Hear none, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Sorry.
Sorry, aye.
And myself, Nazir, closed.
I make a motion to approve as presented, granted relief requested use.
We have a motion to grant the variance for 50-23 Echo Athletics LLC.
Second.
Second by Jim, it does meet statutory requirement of MGL 40A, Section 10, do I have a second, a second by Rich, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye, and Kara, you're good.
Thank you very much.
Aren't you glad you were last?
Thank you.
Aren't you glad you were at the end of the list?
Yeah. We had a lot of fun.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, very well, thank you.
Hopefully not at our expense.
They'll probably be back for a sign, right? They'll be back for a sign?
No, I think they have.
Well, I mean.
If they, if it fits. That's funny, I'm looking at Health Athletic, it's the only places, no. You could do golf courts, campground.
Oh, it's funny, you look through the whole thing, it's everything other than that.
You could do tennis club, youth, youth camp, tennis club.
Everything but.
I mean, what is, what is the, I, we should talk about that, like to have that changed.
You know, Veronica brings up a good point.
Because I would like to say yes on a variance when there's.
I, so we had the list, remember we should do a list?
Yeah, I, it's in my folder, but I don't have my folder.
So could, could either Ken or you?
We talked to Paul, Paul, can we add this to the list, maybe next zoning bylaw, we could change that?
Fix it, make, make physical fitness allowed in strip commercial.
Yeah, I got quite a list on my desk that we could.
So can you add that to it, if you agree to it?
Add that to the strippers.
Now, also, your, your memo about a cottage, we should implement this in the bylaw. You know, I mean, I, I'm glad these people came straightforward as a variance, because if they went as a, if they were trying to pull this like the other one, I would have said no, but I'm glad they came straightforward.
I just wrote it out, just.
Yeah, but we should, we should put it in the bylaw, your memo, it should go in the bylaw describing what a cottage and what's, what's and what's not. So if you put it, and we'll discuss it, bring it to planning board, and hopefully they put it on the warrant.
Would that shape the tax, what they use to tax the?
I don't think so.
Would it be less?
I, I don't think it affects the tax.
I mean, because if it, if it's a cottage and you've got people living in it.
What they're using.
And then you turn around and say, well, as long as you don't have a stove in it, it's like, well, they're taxing them for it. It's either can't be a cottage, or it can be a cottage, you know what I'm saying?
Well, eventually, if the value goes up, they'll tax it more, go ahead.
We should all be using the same definition.
That's the most important thing.
Yeah.
We don't have, if you implement this.
Accessory should be called an accessory building, which it is. That's what it should be called.
Exactly, and it's a different tax.
Field pass before not determining what the zoning is.
Right, and that's.
And, and then this memo, I mean, we voted twice now and really haven't applied that.
No, this, previously on that one, on the warrant, we, we apply, we, we work on that, but in this one, this is useless, because they, they're applying for a variance. He just went out of his way and wrote for us a memo, the commissioner, but they were asking for a variance for a second dwelling. They weren't saying, oh, it's a cottage, we should be dwelling like the other one, you know what I'm saying? Which is, I think it was cool of them, nice people, whatever.
Well, maybe, maybe they watched a former earlier meeting and said, hmm, we can see which way the wind's blowing over there, let's set our sails in that direction.
All right. Okay, let's discuss, what did he want us to discuss, rules and regulations?
So we got to read this in.
So, Paul, if you could put this on your ads, on your big list.
So, this needs to be read in, this, if we're going to go to number five.
Yeah, we are.
Okay. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on December 13th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in room 320 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571, on the rules and regulations for site pan review and special permit. Okay.
Not, not the variance?
This is for the, this is, everything attached to what I just read, those are the rules and regulations, and we have to vote whether we like them, change them, say we hate them, fix them, make them worse, make them better, do our magic, and we can do it all in the next three minutes, or we can continue, take them home and read them and talk, continue it to a future meeting.
Well, I just attached mine to a random file, so.
You just attached yours to a random, so you don't have one, so that's good, we'll keep you quiet. Maybe I can explain. I have, I have some comments without even reading them. I've been reading emails, I believe this is the appropriate time to discuss this, I, I've read some emails concerning the process of mailing letters to abutters, and the emails I read were going to transfer the burden of mailing the letters and creating the list to the applicant, which I agree with. And then the, in further discussion, the, the original email I read said that the applicant can mail all the abutters, and the planning department can mail the state and the town and this and that, and the other jazz, and my, my comments, and I believe they were received well, were, if the applicant's going to do the mailing, then tell them, include these people in your mailing, they also need to get a letter, and let the applicant do all the mailing.
Well, let me, I, 10 years ago, I used to do this for 30 years, so that's what we used to do.
10 years ago, you did it for 30 years?
Well, 10 years ago, I was, I'm doing it now for 30, but 10 years ago, I was doing it for like 20 years, and this is how it used to work, you go to the assessors, they give you the list, they make the list.
And that's what's going on now?
Right, and then you send the receipts for the green card and the receipts, and when you come here with this file, it will have all the receipts, because a lot of people tell you, oh, I didn't receive nothing. We will have the proofs, because they weren't home to sign the card, or they were in Florida, whatever, but we'll have the proof, but we got to go through these receipts and match that list from the assessor in every hearing.
You don't know which file you stuck it in, do you?
Oh, probably the last one.
That's okay.
You get, you get that?
I must, and here's, here's my problem with that.
So let me explain to you. So in other words, Prospect Street, there was 50 abudders, roughly, they said, right?
Yep.
So now it's going to take a lot of work. You do the... So that relief her from a lot of work, so because the applicant's going to do it, that's what they should be doing, because that's a lot of work. An engineer would charge $500, $600 to do that, or the attorney. So when they come, when they send these notice, you get the receipt, you know, the one with the stamp that they mailed it, and...
They got it signed, right?
No, not the sign. They send the green card, but if you're not home to sign it...
But you can't receive the certified until you sign it, right?
Right, but if you're not there, there's a receipt, you send it. So this is our proof, not the applicant proof that he sent it, you know? And if the green card here, it's a plus, but...
There's an example in the back of your folder.
Right.
Like this one, for instance. So these are the mail receipts.
Yeah, you see that?
So I already made copies of the mail receipts, these are the mail receipts, I just made a copy of it.
Right.
And then these are the green cards, but if they don't pick up the actual mail, so this comes back, because they never signed for it, whether it's a P.O. box, or they just never...
So we have it here, we can say, whoa, it was mailed here.
I just made copies of these.
But sometimes it takes two months to get that letter back, and the hearing, we have the receipt. If the guy says, oh, I was never notified, we'll say, oh, look at the receipt right here.
Yes, you were.
But technically, the applicants will be giving me these back.
Right, that's our receipt. So when we come here, one of us here, one of us here is going to check this assessors' list and go receipt by receipt that it's been...
Well, I can check it before it comes here, so you guys don't take the time, because if there's 50 abudders, that's a lot of people for you to cross-reference.
Right.
I'll do it before it comes to the hearing.
That's nice, that'd be good.
Be nice to take that burden off of us, having to go through...
Right, and then if one person says, oh, here, I wasn't notified, we'll look there, we'll say, yes, you were, right here.
So here's...
Now, before you go forward, is this implemented on the new regulation, Ken?
This would be implemented with the new regulation. I don't know if this version before you has that in there, but we'd be putting that in there, in the new version. This, what you have before you came right out of Article 15. You see, what we did in the last town meeting was we changed Article 15, the site plan review bylaw, and we took out all the process pieces, the number of plans and the fees and the North Arrow, whatever was required for submittal, goes into the rules and regulations instead of the bylaw. It makes it easier for you to modify or amend the requirements for submittals. And what this does is it just takes out what was in Article 15 and puts it into rules and regulations of the board, so you have those to apply to any application that comes before you. And we'll be putting in that requirement that... And what will happen is Sonia will type up a public notice and give it to the applicant. The applicant will go to the assessors, get in the abudders list of 300 feet, and then they'll mail out the, with the certified mail, with the return receipt or the green cards. And then when we, before the meeting, we should have that submitted to us, and we can check it, check the list of the abudders that the assessors put out against the green cards or the certified mail that gets returned to us. And we can see if they didn't notify everybody that it was on the assessors' list. I'll just need to confirm that everybody's notified as appropriate, as needed. And it was typical before, for some reason, the town changed it, because I guess they didn't, you know, it was working well to have the applicants mail the abudders notices. They weren't getting them out in time or whatever. But I think in this case, we can put the burden back onto them, and if they don't have it, if they haven't done it right, then they don't get the public hearing.
All right, so I would suggest under section 2.5 administration, create a 2.5.6 under payment of fees, will be number four, that the applicant will have to do the mailing and everything else. Don't you agree, Ken?
Absolutely. Instead of having them pay a fee for the abudders notices, they do the abudders notices themselves.
All right.
That would be 2.5.4?
2.5.4. Can you add this, Ken, for next time, so we could vote on it? So there'll be under section 2.5.5, payment of fees, and that will be number four, because you have 1, 2, 3, and it will be number four, that the applicant must mail, and whatever we talked about, they must do the mailing, and he'll get the abudders list from the assessing department.
2.5.5.
So you will, can you add it, and next time we'll vote on it?
So... Yeah, I can do that. Sonia can do that, yeah.
So that would be...
Always back on Sonia, all the time, huh?
That would be on site plan review only, but there's also these instructions for application for special permit variance, where who does the mailing and what, that should be handed out, should be altered. And this comprehensive permit rules of the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals adopted February 8th, 2006, is this what's being replaced by what's in front of us, or is this in addition to?
That's in addition to, that's what it means, that is.
In addition, yeah.
Okay. So the comprehensive permit rules of the Wareham zoning bylaw, Board of Appeals, I'm sorry, those remain the same? This is a new set of rules just for site plan review?
It should be for site plan review and special permit, I think it was noticed for a special permit too, wasn't it?
Okay. So this is, and this is 20... And this is going to become part of Article 15? Am I saying it correctly, or...
No, this is something that you just filed with the town clerk, and it's just rules and regulations that you have.
So it's not an article, it's not part of the zoning bylaws, this is just the rules for site plan review.
I'm sorry, this is like implementing regulations of the state law, and we have a zoning bylaw that's been passed, and so now we have to have rules and regulations that go along with it.
All right, so I still contend that we all need the opportunity to read all these rules before we take action, but going back to my original concern, who's mailing what, when, why, and how, I think that the paper that gets handed out to any applicant coming in front of this board, they go to the office and they get handed this piece of paper with a staple in it, and then they do a quarter of what it says they're supposed to do if we're lucky. But whether they do it or don't do it, I think this needs, also need the comprehensive permit... I'm sorry, I've got the wrong thing on my hand. The instructions for application for special permit variance, Wareham Board of Appeals. I believe those instructions should also be altered to put the burden of the mailing upon the applicant. And I further believe that not only, you know, sending them down to the assessors' office is an opportunity for failure. And the reason I say that, and I'll cite an example, when the Onset Bay Marina came before us, their property consists of multiple lots, I'll just pick a number, let's say eight or nine, but their application stated a lot, the lot that their address was assigned to. So the people in the office down the hall went to that lot number, threw some information into a computer and generated a list. The list was flawed. I believe the applicant should be, have the burden of providing us a copy of their, all their lots, their lot and all their parcel.
Right.
And then, when I do it, when I make a mailing list, I highlight the subject, or all the subjects included, and then I go out and I say, what touches it? And I put an X on it, in a different color. And then I can cross-reference that to a mailing list. That's not being done, and my point is, because that's not being done, again, we could get a flawed list and somebody could say I didn't get proper notice. I think that burden should be on the applicant, and I think it should be part of these instructions of creating that mailing list. And I think the instructions for the mailing list should include the mailings, like I said, I forget who it has to go to other than the abudders, but it goes to somebody else, of the planning board, or the clerk, or I forget what the email referred to, but instead of having the department assistant, chairman, multi-hatted lady, having to send out five or six letters, and the applicant sends out X, I think the applicant should send them all. And I think that...
Yeah, the applicant would send them all, but it should be on the rules and regulation that the applicant has to state all the lots about that own.
Exactly, exactly. I think it needs to be spelled.
That's all we have to say in the rules and regulation, you must show all the lots, then go abudder to the abudder or 300 for radius, period. But they have to bring it to the assessor, the assessor has to issue that list and they stamp it, that's the only way, that's how state law works.
Well, you understand what I'm saying, I think the applicant should spoon-feed the assessor that map and those, so that the assessor can't make a mistake.
Right, they bring them all these lots, and they go...
And also, if the applicant makes the mistake, we can say, well, you need to fix it.
That's what I want.
Before we proceed.
Yeah.
I want to put the burden on the applicant.
Right.
Reapply.
And that they're instructed to do that, then they can't say, well, that's what your assessor's office did.
Right, right.
They're still going to say, well, your assessor's office certified our list is correct, and so we left it...
Well, he didn't give them the plan right, and all the lots.
Ah, ah, okay. You get, we're all in agreement, we're just...
You get that, Ken? The way you're going to write that, I don't know how you're going to write that, but that's...
Yeah, I can get that in.
That's the idea. All right, anything else?
Can we make it harder for you, Ken?
No, no, just make it harder for the applicants, that's all.
Can't we create some work for you? You look like, you know, you look fairly bored in there staring at your computer screen sometimes.
So we got to continue?
Yeah, we're going to continue this matter to 27. Can I get a motion now?
So moved.
Second?
Second by Rich, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Veronica?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye. So it's continued, and hopefully next time we'll vote on it. Before we go, just quick discussion. Maybe we should explore this. In our bylaw, when you do like a business under nine cars and under, you don't need site plan. I think we should start thinking, making a site plan.
I think it gets costly for small businesses, though.
I think, I agree with Veronica. I know what you're saying, but...
You could have a car lot with nine cars and under, if you don't have a site plan.
Well, I actually, we need to talk about like what we think are maximum things for car lots and stuff, because I, it still burns me, that oil change place, it came through here, and we said, yes, 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 and the place looks awful, because they're like, well, you don't have a bylaw that says we cannot, we're meeting the parking requirements.
What oil change?
On the corner.
It's not an oil change anymore, it's Buzzard's Way Garage.
Well, our protein, well, Buzzard's Bay Garage, it's...
Just for record, I don't think I was in on that.
Right, but anyway, Buzzard's Bay Garage, they have to go, it's up to the selectmen to minimize the permit. They grant the license, we don't.
But in terms of zoning, saying that you have so many spots for a car, because they came here and said, well, and just same thing with the car lot across the street, well, there's no limit in the zoning bylaw on how much we can have, you're just being arbitrated. Well, I don't want to be arbitrated, but I think we should have a limit.
No, there is a limit.
So the site plan review is...
There's a limit. If you fit them on the land with the lines, the only difference is that the guy's selling trucks, and each truck is as much as five cars.
That's what happened.
And then the town, the state took some, so it made it worse.
Well, we granted it after what the state was taking, they drew the plans...
Right, supposedly cars, not trucks, but...
So maybe there needs to be clarification on the size of the car.
Well, that's up to the selectmen to decide, because the selectmen could say, you know what, we're not giving you 50 cars, we're giving you 10, they could do that.
You're talking about the guy that was across the street that came in?
The, you know, it used to be the oil change on the...
Well, there's...
It's not an oil change anymore, it used to be.
It's an oil, he oil changes on Saturday.
Yeah.
You go in on...
It still says that, I've driven by them.
You can't get your oil changed Monday through Friday, you have to show up, getting line on Saturday, he'll change it. Other than that, he puts, fixes cars during the week, because he doesn't like to take his... I mean, go ask him, he'll tell you the whole story.
It was formal, so they just didn't take the sign down that says oil change, because they didn't want to do a change of use.
I believe, because I've been in there, and he told me only Saturdays he changes oil.
Kind of, yeah.
But anyway, going back to the number of cars, the selectmen is the granting authority for the license, so when he renews it this year, selectmen could easily say, you know what, we're only giving you 10 cars, or five, or 20, whatever. It don't matter if we grant 50, it's the selectmen that decides.
So that can change for an existing area?
Yeah, selectmen, if they feel it's burdened, they can.
Yeah, it looks awful.
Talk to the selectmen.
And they never did what they said they, they haven't done what was supposed to be done in terms of the landscaping, because that's what we gave them a variance on.
Right, so maybe go to the selectmen meeting.
Well, if we gave a variance on landscaping and they haven't conformed, then we can talk to Paul and say, I think we told them that they needed to plant carrots along the front, and they've got cucumbers, so give them a notice.
You can.
We can do that.
Yeah.
But as far as how many cars and stuff, that's the selectmen's job, that's not our job.
Right.
You know, we don't want to, we don't want to, we don't want to overstep our bounds, but if our bounds, if our bounds have been violated, then we need to, if we notice it, then you tell Paul, Paul will go write them a nasty letter, and they'll come in here and appeal his letter.
No, you could email the selectmen, all of us, say, we... Okay, do you want to hear? You could email the selectmen that we believe after the highway took apart of these two